To order. I'm Kevin Arnold, the LRA chairman. And on behalf of the fellow commissioners, the mayor of the city of St. Louis, Comptroller's Office, the City of Board of Education, Neil Richardson, Lance Knuckles, and the employees of the LRA. We welcome you. Let's call the roll call for the commissioners.
Commissioner Arnold.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Present.
Commissioner Val.
Present.
Thank you. It is a job of the LRA to sell unutilized, underdeveloped properties to residents and developers that have the financial ability and the expertise to redevelop such properties and to get them back to the tax roll. In a few moments, we will start our procedures listed in the agenda for today. If you have, if we have anyone that has been assigned to speak on behalf of their offer, you will be given that chance. But please, limit your presentations to three minutes. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of a July 26 meeting?
I move that we accept the minutes from the July 26 meeting.
Second.
Motion carries.
We have covered our vote.
Okay, give me the roll call.
Commissioner Arnold.
Present.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Val.
I have to call the action. Any reports or actions by the commissioners?
No report.
No report. Do we have anyone that had been assigned to speak on behalf of their offer? You will be given that chance now.
We have all the women assigned. She's here to teach on behalf of the board.
Okay. Welcome to the conference. We have three minutes, Ms. Tyus.
Oh, okay. Good morning.
Thank you.
Did I go in any particular order?
No.
Okay, I have with me Ms. Ruff, who had a lot for lots, vacant lots. They'll be forty.
Forty-one, forty-two.
I'm sorry. Forty-one, fifty-two. Forty-one, fifty-four. That's rich. I want to say she did reach out to me. One of the only ones that did reach out to me. I went over there. There are two very small lots. I was with that. She is the only person keeping up the property over there. So she's fighting the battle. And I am in support of her purchasing that lot. I am also in support of, even though they didn't reach out to me, number. Want me to use numbers?
I just may.
Okay, thank you. Covenant House, U.S. Which is right across the street from my house. And he did not reach out to me. But I'm still just a little piece of land. It's number thirty-six. It's a side lot program.
Thirty-six.
I have a question about thirty-eight, which is renewal, option renewal. I've not spoken to Michael at all. Right now, Kingsway East is in a. We are going for a big development right now. Everybody wants a piece of Kingsway East, which is where I live. And so number thirty-eight has forty-nine oh one, forty-nine eleven, forty-eight, forty-one, forty-eight fifty-five, and forty-eight sixty-three, Dr. Martin Luther King. And so I am in the process of sending letters over asking for property to be blighted, given the domain. I would like that to be removed. And I will call Michael today and set up a meeting to find out what he's doing with the property. Because we have about four developers right now who are vying for the land in the Kingsway East neighborhood. And I'm trying really hard to write up developer plans and meet with all the people and to see what the community wants. We had a big meeting Saturday. Had almost a hundred people. So they're very interested in what's going to happen in their community. This was given to Mr. McMillan when that was part of the eighteenth ward. It is now part of the twelfth ward. And so the people who live there want a voice of what happens. I'm not saying we don't want it. I just want to know what they intend to do with it. And I want to work with them. I know him. I trained him. We became an alternate. So I'm asking that we separate the tenth ward from the twelfth ward so that we can find out exactly what the plans are. On through the union. Oh, fifty-three fifty-union. I have requested that that be demolished. But if someone is.
What number is that?
I'm sorry, number five. Which is fifty-three fifty-union and fifty-three fifty-eight union. Mr. Nuttles knows. I have requested a big, long list of LRA properties being demolished. So and the reason why is because Mark Twain Neighborhood has a plan that was in place before I got elected. And part of the plan is to tear down the union and make that commercial. So if we start rehabbing houses in the middle of it, it makes it hard. I haven't heard from Mr. Crowder. And I would ask that that be deferred until you can tell me what he wants to do with that. Because we have already started a demolition program. And I think we've probably demolished maybe eight, nine houses. Have a list of more. And we would like to do a development plan that is commercial. That's the only place in Mark Twain Neighborhood that we have opportunity to do development that's commercial. I am supportive, number ten, fifty-two sixty Mappin. I'm in support of number eleven, forty-four twenty-four Ambe. I'm hesitant. I haven't met with the people in the greater deal. I found, I just picked that neighborhood up four months ago. And so I've been meeting with it. There are four developers that I was set up with previous alderpeople. And it's been divided up. And so I'm hesitant to say that's a great idea without knowing if it's in the middle or something that's already planned. I would ask if we could defer that and I could have a chance to meet with that person.
Is that eleven also?
That's number fourteen. That's number, no, no, not eleven. I supported that, number fourteen. I'm sorry. They have four developers that have had, that the prior alderman had kind of divided the neighborhood up. And I don't want to get in the middle of it if it's something good. I'm not opposed to number fifteen. I guess I'm supportive. That's a lot of money. But if number fifteen, if he wants the lot, I don't have a problem with that. Number nineteen, the same thing. I would like to just hold that over and try to meet with the proposed person who wants to buy the lots. Because again, run into that. You already got developers. I'm already trying to work out what's going to happen there. I just need time to make sure I'm not making a mistake supporting something and then it's something that's not good. I believe that's all.
Thank you.
Older woman Tyus, could you please repeat the first one, the number of the first one that you were speaking in support of or speaking about?
I think it was twenty-two.
Number twenty-two?
I'm Adam Val. How are you?
Hey, how are you?
Did you get that, twenty-two?
Yes, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I'm smart living by design Good morning, everyone. My name is Judy. My husband, Sebastian, can make it here today. I just give you a little background. I'm over eighteen years. My is real jerk, twenty-seven years. Been doing rehab for twenty-five years. My husband is a master plumber, St. Louis City and County. We have since he was nineteen. He's a former teacher at Rankin. We've been doing rehabs and new construction for years. We have opted on cabin to develop some lots. We've been working. We've had several options. There were six months of options. In the midst of it, we had some things done. We got all the women's approval. And then there were some changes with the process where they were then requiring the neighborhood to be involved. So we went, so we had to go back and help get involved with the neighborhood, which we have approved from them on some of the lots, some of the land. So well, we had to redesign. We had to go back and do some redesign from them. We had a garage in the front. Then one of some things in the back. They want to bring back the traditional west end. We have several plans approved. But they want us to make some other changes too because we have, some of the lots are large. So we're splitting them up. Maybe do some townhomes and some more, some narrow houses or something like that. Cape Cod style housing. So we need additional time. You know, we've been moving through. We've had surveys, the architects involved. We've gone through a lot of process. We're actually, within our company, we're licensed, large, we're dealers. So we build using technology. In addition, that we use other finance. The option, we use the traditional. But we also approve builders with commerce. You have bank, first bank. So to give you an example, we, I sold, I helped a lady buy a lot through LRA on the Fox Park neighborhood. She's breaking ground next month. She took a LRA lot. She's splitting it up. She has a construction loan. And we're building it for her. And so it's actually two. So there's going to be two LRA lots on the books in October, tax. You know, they got approved by the city, the historic, the neighborhood. It was a battle, but we got it through. So within this project too, we're going to use some of the traditional financing in addition to the construction finance. Where we, we have four agents, three agents and a broker. So we're going to pre-sell some of the lots. They're going to come with construction loan. We're going to do some spec. And we're going to get the project done in that. So if you already have an interested buyer, but we're waiting on the final process. So we just want to ask for our time. Like I said, we had to go back and make some changes for the neighborhood. You know, we've done a lot of work on this, spent a lot of money. And we have the neighborhood support. Our machine supports them. You know, the last section of the allowance, we kind of, we need to get the lots, the hundred-foot lot. And there's two seventy-three-foot lots split so we can design some townhomes and get approval from the neighborhood. And that's pretty much it. You know, we're excited about it. You know, I'm a real big advocate for LRA. I tell clients about it all the time. You know, like I said, we, you know, the process we did with the show with Fox Park, we wanted to do it multiple times to help pull the land out, you know, develop the city.
At this point, what is your projected timeline?
Well, if we get the extension, like I said, we have somebody that's in place that's ready to start building. You know, we got to get the final plan. So we want to start breaking ground within the next six months. Because we do have some plans approved. But we want to go ahead and get all of them approved through the neighborhood. So we're ready to start breaking ground on some of the lots now. But we want, we want to be able to, you know, like I said, we're going to get the other land design approved through the neighborhood. But we also want to do a spec house. But we also want to pre-sell and have clients come in with the structural.
Thank you.
Thank you. I believe we have someone online. You can go ahead, sir. You can go ahead and speak, sir.
Mr. Rama, can you unmute yourself, please?
Yeah, good morning, everybody. My name is Ron Bassner. I would briefly speak to line item thirty-two to the bid that my son and I placed on several lots on the 5,000 block of Enright. We are really excited about that opportunity. We are in the rehabbing business for many years already. We built, actually, also building on an LRA lot in the past. We worked in ward number ten in the past, rehabbing a place. And we took the time to speak with all the women, Shamine Hubbard Clark, and also to the Neighborhood Association President, Rhonda Jones, and the manager, Maya White. And we feel that we have the support of those personalities in this process. I also canvassed myself the area and got fifteen support signatures from residents in this 5,000 block of Enright. So I believe we offer a very competitive bid for those lots. And I would like to ask the commission to approve our bid for those lots.
Is anyone else? You can go ahead.
Good morning. Thank you, board and staff for letting me speak with you again. I'm sorry, I was out. The reason why I asked to speak with you again is because they're just to express their their fellow, they, the O'Fallon organization is quite sincere on this quest to, with the options of urgency, LRA sites. There are multiple sites. Yes, there is. But with that, our interest is truly for new construction, for commercial development. For, in the area of West Forest, the O'Fallon community is called the West Forest Commercial Business District. We have been conversing with Mr. Richardson, with S.L. D.C., and Mr. Geno. I can't, there's a new, a lot of new people with.
Mr. Austin.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much. But with that, most importantly with that, we have also been conversing with Midwest Bank to be our extra lender. The O'Fallon organization will affect the lead developer. We have selected Kwame Construction Company to work with us to be the contractor. Kwame, of course, is very anxious to get moving, to let us sit with them with their architects and their drawings to get an idea to scope. You will see on the, with that list of properties there, there are basically three main streets that we, that we are requesting our options for, Waring, Alice, and Mary. And with that, we have, the organization has selected, decided to divide each street in different phases of development. So but with that, and finally, with it, finally, I would apologize for constantly forwarding up a lot of emails to the LRA. Because I believe I had heard from the last meeting that the board president had a question regarding the finances or something to that effect. So that's why I went back to the organization to make sure to pull up our current statement to confirm that we, we have the funds to support our option of purchase. So but again, that's basically it. And I thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
And what else?
That includes who I have as speakers.
We're going to move to action five, action to open and purchase. Open to purchase of parcels owned by the LRA that consist of unoccupied grounds or physical structures, single-family residence, side lots, CFF, or FF, et cetera. The offers have submitted, the office, wait a minute, the officers have submitted offers to purchase with the intentions to rehabbing properties as residential or commercial projects. And extension of their yards, space, communities, gardens, or green spaces to enhance, to beautify their community.
The first on our agenda, under the offers, offers to purchase would be new construction and new construction program are for Class A lots and minimum of 4,000 square feet in total land with no more than three contiguous lots per offer. The first on our agenda is sixty forty-eight Maple Avenue, sixty fifty-two Maple Avenue, sixty fifty-four Maple Avenue. And looking at that offer before us, I would like to defer this offer pending additional information from the offer. Do I have a second?
Second, but I would offer a friendly amendment to add community input to that.
Okay. What's a friendly amendment?
The friendly amendment, Commissioner, is that a part of the motion should include that this offer needs to.
Okay.
With the west end.
Okay, very good. Okay, it's been.
Second.
So it's going to be second.
Okay, call for the vote.
Commissioner Arnold.
Hi.
Commissioner Brown.
Hi.
Commissioner Val.
Next on our agenda, we have our as-is program. As-is rehab program, our Class A residential buildings up to six units, no more than one building with no more than two contiguous lots or one commercial building. Number two item is ten seventeen Gimbleen Avenue. And that's presented by Uli Warren. I'd like to move that we accept the offer of $1,000 with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing.
It's been moved and second. Previous roll. Hearing no, motion carries.
Next, we have fifty-four thirty-nine Clover Avenue by, presented by William Jones. I'd like to move that we accept the offer of $1,000 with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing.
Second.
I'll move to second. I mean, I'm sorry, carry. Previous roll call, I'm sorry.
Call for the roll call vote.
Commissioner Arnold.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Val.
Motion carries. Next on our agenda, we have fifty, number four, fifty-seven seventeen Kennardley and fifty-six fifty-one Kennardley. I move that we accept the offer of $2,100 with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion carries.
Next, we have fifty-three fifty-union and fifty-three fifty-eight union. I make the motion that we accept the offer of $4,000 with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Do we have a second?
Hearing no second.
Hearing no seconds. That's it. Okay.
So I would like to offer a motion that we defer that one for further community engagement. Second.
Previous roll. Carries.
Motion carries.
Carries.
Next, we have item number six, fifty-three twenty-one Wells, presented by Jason Ferguson. I move that we defer this offer pending review of community input.
Second.
Hearing no objection, motion carries.
Next, we have item number seven, fourteen twenty-five Shamet Place. And I move to reject this offer due to insufficient resources.
Do we have a second? A second. Go for a previous roll call. Hearing no objections, motion carries.
Hold on, can we do a roll call for that, please? I'd like to abstain.
Okay. I withdraw the previous motion. Okay. I reject the previous roll and request a roll call.
Commissioner Arnold.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Val.
Abstain.
Motion carries.
Next on our agenda, we have nine thirty-one Harland Avenue, presented by Kenneth Sims. I move that we accept the offer of a thousand dollars with closing contingent upon budget and financing and also pending community support.
Second.
Previous roll. Hearing no objections.
Well, she has. Yes, let's just do a roll call on that one.
Can we call for the vote?
Commissioner Arnold.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Val.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Yes.
Hearing no objection, motion carries.
Next on our agenda, item number nine, we have several properties uh, presented here on Pleasant Avenue, forty-one fourteen Pleasant, forty-one sixteen, forty-one eighteen. Uh, I move that we reject this offer due to condition of disposition of existing properties. Do I have a second?
Second, but with discussion.
Okay. Yes, your discussion.
So it, it was my understanding during the agenda prep that the condition of the building itself was okay, but the condition of the building next to it, um, which the person does not own, the offer does not own, was the problem that there was a hole in the wall with the building next to it. And I have, um, a bit of hesitance in holding that against the offer who seems to be the person who is maintaining that block.
Excuse me, Commissioner, so you're saying that their existing city-owned property is in good condition, is that what you're saying?
It was my understanding that the part that was in poor condition was a building that was attached to their building and not their actual building. Is that, is that incorrect? Has that been updated?
Commissioner Val, this is Sinetta, and I don't remember us discussing that one.
So, will, I withdraw my rejection and we can defer item number nine, uh, for additional information and consideration.
Um, second.
Call for vote.
Commissioner Arnold.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Val.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, we have fifty-two sixty Matbit Avenue, presented by Ashley Cooksey. I move that we accept the offer for one thousand dollars with closing contingent upon budget and financing.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Arnold.
Yes.
Commissioner Val. Commissioner Val.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next on our agenda, we have item number eleven, four-four-two-four Dome Bank Avenue, presented by Mika Boyes in Corona, the Boyes. Uh, I move that we counter the offer at a thousand dollars with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
Repeat roll call. Previous roll. Hearing no objections, motion carries.
Next, we have forty-seven thirty-two Newcomb Place. I move that we accept the offer of a thousand dollars with closing contingent upon budget and financing and pending information, uh, from the community.
Second.
Repeat roll call. Hearing no objection, motion carries.
All right, hearing no objection, motion carries. Next, we have, uh, item number thirteen, fifty-two nineteen Beacon Avenue, presented by Chastity LeNoire. And I move that we defer this offer pending community input. Do I have a second?
Second.
Repeat roll. Previous roll. Hearing no objections, motion carries.
Next, we have items number fourteen, presented by Eric Mason. There are several properties that are listed, uh, thirty-two twenty-two North Newstead, thirty-five hundred North Newstead, and forty-three forty-eight Ashland. I motion that we defer this action pending, this offer pending community input. Do I have a second?
Um, second. That's number fourteen, correct?
Yes, that is.
Second.
Yes.
Previous roll. Hearing no objections, motion carries.
Next, in our section, we have development. Under the development program are offers for parcels owned by LRA that consist of physical structures, single-family residence, side lots, two families, four families, etc. For the rehab and or construction of any combination of the following, rehab and or construction of mixed-use buildings, rehab and or construction of multiple residential buildings, rehab of residential buildings with more than six units and or commercial projects. The first item in this category is seventy-eight fifty North Broadway or four twenty-five Blasey. Um, I move that we counter this offer at twenty-one thousand five hundred and seventy-three with posing contingent upon budget and financing and pending community input. Do I have a second?
Second.
Previous roll. Hearing no objection, motion carries.
Item number sixteen, we have an offer to purchase seventy-five, seven fifty-seven South Second Street, presented by GSSTL CM Property Owner LLC. And I move that we accept the offer of twenty-five thousand dollars with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing.
Have a second.
Do I have a second?
Second, sorry, I couldn't get the video to come on.
Previous roll. Hearing no objection, motion carries.
Item number seventeen, we have several properties listed in exhibit A on Oriole Avenue. Uh, I move that we counter the offer for eight thousand eight hundred and thirty-three dollars as for six-month option with co-closing contingent upon budget and financing and pending community input. Do I have a second?
Second.
Previous roll. Hearing no objection, motion carries.
Item number eighteen, we have multiple properties, uh, submitted on behalf of O'Fallon Community Developing Organization. Uh, and in consideration of the offer, I move that we accept the offer of fifty-six thousand nine hundred and eight dollars for a twenty-four month option with closing contingent upon plans, budget, and financing. Do I have a second?
Second with a comment.
Okay.
Um, the financing thought, looks like it's seeking tax abatement, and I just would like to make this commission and the public aware or reiterate that that does take money from our public schools, those tax abatements. So, um, it, it is not generally the will of St. Louis Public Schools to keep money from our students. So, um, if there are any alternate ways of funding that, I would encourage the developer to look at that.
Uh, Commissioner Val, this is directly, I hope, I do want to have a clarification that tax abatement does not take money away from an unacted parcel. It actually allows a development opportunity to graduate its tax base, which does not equate into taking resources from the public schools. I need to be transparent about how that works.
Call for vote.
It does not actually put money back into the schools. It puts a time limit on the period of time that the money would go back to the school. So it's a five-year abatement, a ten-year abatement, a fifteen-year abatement. That's not actually getting money back into our schools.
Commissioner.
We can go ahead and call for the vote if you like.
Can we call for vote?
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Arnold.
Yes.
Commissioner Val.
Abstain.
Motion carries.
Next section, we have the general lot purchase program. The general lot purchase program provides guidelines for the sale of LRA lots for any purpose other than new construction, building, rehab, or development. The first in this category, we have several properties listed on North Taylor, uh, presented by Benham, uh, Baraki and Baraki Construction. Uh, I move that we counter the offer for eight thousand nine hundred and forty-one dollars with closing contingent upon financing, paving, and landscaping. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second, I'm, I think my agenda skipped a number, I'm sorry about that, second.
Rachel, what you said, financing, paving, and spending, paving.
I'm sorry. Uh, correct financing and replace that with Benson, thank you for that.
Second.
Previous roll. I'm sorry. Call for the vote.
Commissioner Arnold.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Val.
Yes.
Previous roll. I mean, motion carries, I'm sorry.
All right, next we have on our agenda, item number twenty, address forty-one forty-nine Dr. Martin Luther King, presented by Ashley Settle. I move that we accept the offer of three thousand one hundred and twenty-three dollars with closing contingent upon budget and financing and pending community input. Do I have a second?
Second.
Previous roll. Hearing no objection, motion carries.
The next on our agenda, item number twenty-one, twenty-five oh-five Bell Glade Place in forty-one forty-one St. Ferdinand Avenue. I move that we accept the offer of three thousand dollars with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing.
Yes. Second.
Second.
Previous roll. Hearing no objections, motion carries.
Next, on our agenda, we have forty-one fifty-two East Natural Bridge and forty-one fifty-four East Natural Bridge. I move that we counter the offer at four thousand one hundred and seventy-six dollars with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Previous roll. Hearing no objection, motion carries.
Item number three, twenty-three, sorry. Item number twenty-three, forty-two twenty-two West Evans Avenue and forty-two twenty-eight West Evans Avenue. I move that we counter the offer for two thousand thirty-four dollars with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second. Previous roll. Hearing no objection, motion carries.
Your question.
Uh, item number twenty-four, fifty-seven thirty-four Acme Avenue, presented by Tennessee Ronison. I move that we accept the offer, a thousand dollars, with closing contingent upon budget and financing and pending community input.
Do we have a second?
Natalie, can you hear us?
I can, I'm sorry, I got a phone call.
Are you seconding?
A second. Previous roll. Hearing no objections, motion carries.
Item number twenty-five, we have an offer to purchase fifty-five thirty-five Partridge, presented by Julio Obera. And I move that we reject this offer due to future potential development. Do I have a second?
Second. Previous roll. Hearing no objection.
I would like to vote no on that one, please.
Call for vote. I withdraw, I withdraw my.
Commissioner Arnold.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Val.
No.
Motion carries.
Next, we have item number twenty-six, nine fifty-four Harland, presented by Sherri Collins. Uh, I move to reject the offer due to future potential development. Do I have a second?
Second. Previous roll. Hearing no objection, and motion carries. I'm called for the vote, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Arnold.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Val.
No.
Next on our agenda, we have item number twenty-seven, seventeen oh-one Core Avenue and seventeen oh-nine Core Avenue. I move that we reject the offer due to the disposition of existing city-owned property. Do I have a second?
Second. Previous roll. I'm sorry, call for the vote.
Commissioner Arnold.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Val.
Abstain.
Next, on our agenda. Next on our agenda, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, my bad.
Motion carries.
Uh, next on our agenda, we have item number twenty-eight, fifty seventy-one Beacon. Presented by A J Slater, Enterprise Care of Aaron Slater. I move that we accept offer of a thousand dollars with closing contingent upon budget and financing and pending community input. Do I have a second?
Second.
Previous role. Call for the vote.
Commissioner Arnold?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Bow?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, next we have item number twenty-nine, one twenty-one Dock Street, presented by John D. and Melinda D. Miller. I move that we counter the offer at four thousand one hundred and thirty-seven dollars, uh, for a six-month option with closing being contingent upon acceptance of environmental covenant with closing contingent upon approval of plans, budget, and financing.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Commissioner Arnold?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Bow?
Yes.
Motion carries. Previous role, I'm sorry.
Uh, item number thirty, twenty-seven hundred Rucker, presented by Loretta Kelly. And I move that we counter this offer at six thousand two hundred and forty-three dollars with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing and pending community input. Do I have a second?
Second.
Previous role. Thank you, previous role. No objection, motion carries.
Next on our agenda, we have item number thirty-one, twenty-one thirty-two De Soto Avenue, presented by Darren Pearson. And I move that we counter the offer at six hundred and sixty-six dollars with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second. Previous role. No objection, motion carries.
Okay. Next, next on our agenda, we have item number thirty-two. Uh, and that's presented by Serenus Enterprise Ronald and Jury Bassner. I move that we defer this offer, uh, and that it go back for the new plans that have been added, um, to request community input. Do I have a second?
Second.
Previous role. No objections, motion carries.
Next on our agenda, we have thirty-three. And the ad- uh, address of the offer is fifty-three forty-one Co. Brilliant. And that's being presented by Jamodah Properties LLC. Uh, I move that we counter the offer at four hundred and ninety-three dollars with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second. But I do need to abstain on this one, due to a potential perceived conflict of interest.
Okay.
Call for a vote.
Commissioner Arnold?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Bow?
Abstain.
Motion carries.
Uh, item number thirty-four, we have fifty-five fifty Terry Avenue and fifty-five fifty-two Terry Avenue. I move that we counter for fifty-five fifty-two Terry for the sales price of eight hundred and six dollars and reject fifty-five fifty due to potential future development. Do I have a second?
Second. Call for a vote.
Commissioner Arnold?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Bow?
No.
Motion carries.
Next on our agenda, we have twenty-one thirty-three Ober and twenty-one thirty-seven Ober, presented by Greg Money. Uh, I move that we counter the offer at seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars with closing contingent upon budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second. Second.
Call for a vote.
Commissioner Arnold?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Bow?
Yes.
Side lock program, side lock programs of parcels owned by L R A, yes, I'm sorry, motion carries. I'm sorry, I thought I said that. Okay. Side lock program, side lock programs of parcels owned by L R A that consist of unoccupied ground that are too small to support new construction. These non-buildable lots or parcels that are less than four thousand square feet and cannot be contiguous to another L R A parcel. These lots are made available to affordable agent property owners and used to side lock, a side lock and expand property, personal property, I'm sorry.
Uh, the one and only, uh, parcel that we have under this side lock block program is item number thirty-six. That's twenty-eight seventeen rear, uh, uh, our rear North Kings Highway. Uh, I move that we accept this offer. Do I have a second?
Um, second with a question or clarification.
Okay.
Okay.
Was that one of the ones that Alderwoman Tias had requested community engagement for? Or did she say that she supported that? I was trying to take notes, but it was a little hectic.
Oh, there were, there were no comment for number thirty-six.
Okay, gotcha, thank you.
Oh, sorry, that's correct, let me correct, she does, she does support that project.
She what?
She does support that item.
Support, okay. We can move to the vote.
Call for a vote.
Commissioner Arnold?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Bow?
Yes.
Motion carries. Option renewal, option renewal are offers request for additional time to complete projects due to construction delays, funding, et cetera. An option that are near expiration offers must display proof of consistent progress to receive renewal and offers to extensions of time.
Okay, uh, the first item in this section, item number thirty-seven, we have, um, exhibit A with the listed properties presented here. Um, we have, uh, an option renewal request. Uh, we move that we accept the option renewal request, uh, for thirty-six thousand three hundred and thirty-eight dollars for a twelve-month option with closing contingent upon approval of plans, budget, and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Call for a vote.
Commissioner Arnold?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Bow?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next on our agenda, we have item number thirty-eight, uh, presented by Urban League of Metropolitan Saint Louis. And, uh, make the motion that we accept the option renewal for forty-eight thousand six hundred and fifty dollars for a twelve-month option with closing contingent upon approval of plans, budget, and financing.
Second. Sorry.
Second.
Second.
Yeah.
Previous role. No objections, motion carries.
For item number thirty-nine, I'm requesting an update from our director here.
Uh, good morning, commissioners, uh, again, this is Lance Buckles, uh, Director of Real Estate for L R A. Uh, just wanted to provide some additional context for item number thirty-nine, which is N D C Housing and Economic Development for an option renewal. Uh, these set of parcels, we're excited to communicate that this project is making significant progress forward. Uh, in previous rounds, uh, S O B seen through our thirty percent A M I rental housing production program awarded this project seven hundred thousand dollars. And just recently, through the Neighborhood Transformation Grant Program issued by C D A, they were awarded an additional seven hundred thousand dollars, which pushed them strategically in position to have a successful application, um, with the live tech round with M H P C. So we're excited about this, uh, this project is actually moving forward and getting ready to be able to break round in a timely manner. So this option is a meaningful opportunity for them to complete that fundraising. And thank you for the moment to share that update.
Thank you very much. With that, uh, I move that we accept the op- option for, uh, the third month, uh, the third request option, and I, uh, the option is for sixty-five thousand six hundred and six dollars for a twelve-month option with closing contingent upon approval of plans, budget, and financing.
Second. Second.
Previous role. No objection, motion carries.
Next on our agenda, item. Next on our agenda, we have item number forty, uh, property address is fifty-nine sixteen Dr. Martin Luther King Drive, presented by High Tech Charities. I move that we accept the offer, uh, for a twelve-month option in amount of eighteen thousand four hundred and ten dollars with closing contingent upon approval of plans, budget, and financing, do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Previous role. No objection, motion carries.
Item number forty-one, we have several properties listed on Magazine Street, uh, um, option request renewal presented by K M T Enterprises. Here of Kerry Turner, I move that we accept a twelve-month option for four thousand one hundred and forty-four dollars with closing contingent upon approval of plans, budget, and financing.
Second.
Previous roles. No objection, motion carries.
Next, excuse me. Next, we have the Prop N S Stabilize Buildings. The Prop N S program is a strategic initiative with a goal of stabilizing vacant residential buildings owned by the City of Saint Louis Land Realization Authority, which offers them to sell. The program was established by a community-initiated and voter-approved ordinance to create a dedicated source of funding to make it possible for L R A to include properties within the city's land bank of vacant buildings. This investment is intended to increase the likelihood that these properties will be purchased by private parties who will then finish their rehab and transform current deteriorating buildings into decent housing for their communities. We have several properties in this category, the first one is forty, item number forty-two, at fifty-five seventy-four Page, presented by Janice Neff. And, um, based on information that we have, I move that we accept the offer of two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second. Sorry, my video is slow.
Previous role. No objection, motion carries.
Next, under the program, we have item number forty-three, property address is nineteen twenty-seven Annie Malone. Uh, we have two offers that have been presented. Uh, I move that we accept the second offer presented by Rhonda Rochelle Taylor and reject the offer presented by A, the A offer presented by Building Better Lots LLC. I move that we accept the bid again for Rhonda Rachel Taylor at two thousand dollars with closing continued upon approval of budget and financing and reject, uh, item A from Building Better Lots. Do I have a second?
Second.
Call for a vote.
Commissioner Arnold?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Bow?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Uh, next category, we have donations. Donations are parcels which consist of unoccupied ground or structures owned by constituents who desire to donate due to no longer wanting the property or they are incapable of maintaining the upkeep. The donation is entered into the L R A inventory and sold using the L R A process. The first parcel that we have under this program is item number forty-four, property address thirty-one eighteen Littier. I move that we accept the donation. Do I have a second?
Second.
Previous role. No objection, motion carries.
Item forty-five eighty-four sixty-six Comfort Place, I move that we accept the donation.
Second.
Previous role. No objection, motion carries.
Item number forty-six, forty-five thirty-four Ashland Avenue, I move that we accept the donation.
Second.
Previous role. No objection, motion carries. Now we have miscellaneous, miscellaneous items are requested changes from the original approved board decisions. They may include a change of end use, name change, et cetera. The request must be go before the board of consideration or consideration.
Under this category, we have two items, uh, item number- Uh, item number forty-seven presented, uh, by M S D. Easement request. Uh, we have twenty-nine eleven through thirteen Simple Avenue and fifty-four seventy-seven St. Louis Avenue. I move that we accept the parcels here, uh, for the easement request for a hundred dollars each. Do I have a second?
Second.
Previous role. Hearing no objection, motion carries.
Uh, item forty-eight, we have a change of use request uh, presented for fifty-nine twenty-three Julian Avenue by Herschel and Burris. I move that we accept the change of use.
Second.
Previous role. Hearing no objections, motion carries. We gotta do furlough.
In this category, we have several properties under deferral uh, to be submitted for additional community input. The first item in this category, item number forty-nine, is forty-three oh seven College Avenue and forty-three ten College Avenue presented by the Hall Brothers LLC. Um, I move that we reject this offer uh, due to, uh, not compliance of neighborhood housing committee requirements. Do I have a second?
Second. Bob will go.
Commissioner, Commissioner Arnold.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Val.
Abstain.
Next, we have, I'm sorry.
Motion carries.
Next, we have item number fifty, uh, that's nineteen oh eight Core Avenue and nineteen oh six Core Avenue. Uh, presented by Amen Nashi Allem, uh, Allem. And, uh, I move that we reject the offer, uh, due to not compliance of neighborhood housing committee requirements. Do I have a second?
Second. Robert will go.
Commissioner Arnold.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Val.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next. Next, we have item number fifty-one. We have several properties on Vernon presented by Elvemis Inc., Bernard and Andrea Rini. Uh, I move that we reject, uh, the offer due to, uh, non-compliance of neighborhood housing community requirements. Do I have a second?
Second. Bob will go.
Commissioner Arnold.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Val.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item number fifty-two, presented, uh, by Andree Patinko. Uh, property address fifty-five oh seven Partridge Avenue. I make the motion that we, uh, reject this offer due to non-compliance of neighborhood housing and community, I'm sorry, committee requirements. Do I have a second?
Second. Bob will go.
Commissioner Arnold.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Val.
Abstain.
Air motion carries. That concludes our offer for today. We're gonna move on to the next item. Which is the resolution, I believe, Mr. Knuckles.
Actually.
That was something.
Um, the, the first, uh, resolution, uh, resolution twenty-three L R A one fifty-four. We'll actually have my colleague Peter Phillips, uh, one of our vice presidents here at St. Louis Development Corporation, acting in the direction of the body and present that resolution.
Good morning commissioners, uh, Peter Phillips, Vice President of Land Assembly and Redevelopment. Uh, so Resolution twenty-three L R A one fifty-four is authorizing the adoption of the pre-qualified shortlist for environmental firms. Uh, occasionally L R A seeks to do environmental diligence work. Uh, specifically maybe phase one or phase two is that to identify potential contamination on sites, whether it's a site that we're looking to clean up ourselves or that we just wanna have identified, uh, for potential purchasers to be aware of the issue. Uh, so S L D C just went, recently went through this process of soliciting and, uh, evaluating responses for environmental engineering firms who do this work. And they, in August, they adopted this shortlist. And, uh, we are asking L R A to also adopt this shortlist and essentially adopt their process of this solicitation and review. Um, and just as a side note, there, as an attachment to the resolution, there's the nine firms that are recommended for addition to this pre-qualified shortlist. All nine firms, uh, on this, uh, list were the extent of a responsive to the solicitation. So every firm that responded was identified as being qualified to perform this work. And the way this will work, uh, in the future as projects come up, cause this is not, uh, directed to any one individual project, as projects come up, the scopes will be developed and sent to the shortlist for them to, uh, bid and compete on. And in contracts, uh, or various work will be brought back to the board for that work. So if you have any questions about the process or the potential work that can be done, uh, I would, uh, do my best to answer those questions at this time.
Uh, commissioners, uh, Director Knuckles, I would just all like to offer additional information. Uh, as this body has been aware, uh, we are actively pursuing the opportunity to structurally assess inventory of L R A as well as environmentally assess. So this shortlist will be the activated list that we would leverage and for a P that is subsequently being launched, uh, support us investigating our inventory to ensure that we're being better stewards of the inventory that we have. So this body can draw that extra.
Good, thank you very much.
So just a question from the public that I actually have myself. Um, is, if this resolution is accepted, uh, for the shortlist, does it restrict other companies from bidding on the work? And will it just not go out for R F P?
So any, any, any future work will be, that will be sent out that qualifies under this solicitation, which again is, is basically limited to phase one investigation, phase two investigation, maybe cleanup, planning, design, um, things of that nature, which remediation is not included. Uh, it will be bid to this shortlist. Um, or other projects that may be deemed not eligible under this pre-qualified shortlist or that wasn't included in the scope of services for this R F Q uh, would be bid out separately to the public. So essentially it would be sent to the nine firms on this list if it is deemed to be under the scope of services, uh, for the work and the project that we're looking at. Yes, so it would not go to the general public at large.
Gotcha, so there would not be a, a public R F P process? And if anybody wanted to know, um, the work that would be done, they would need to file a sunshine request? Um, because it would only be sent to those nine firms on the list, is that correct?
Correct, but I, I would also say that, that the R F Q process was publicly bid and anyone, and anyone who was interested in doing some of this work could have responded to that.
Got it, thank you.
Commissioner, I think the other thing I would like to add is that having a permanent process strategically and having a shortlist also puts us in compliance for any time we use the very rescue plan at dollars to support the work of our inventory. So, uh, it is really important for us to have gone through the process where there was public R F Q responses for, I think, about thirty days. Uh, and was communicated in three or four different publications, uh, prior to securing this shortlist. So just wanted to make sure that that contact has also been provided to this body around that part.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. With that, I move that we approve Resolution number twenty-three L R A dash one fifty-four.
Bob will go. Thank you, sir, I'm sorry. Do we have a second?
Second.
You will put a vote.
Commissioner Arnold.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Val.
Abstain.
Motion carries.
Next, we have, uh, Resolution number twenty-three L R A one fifty-five. I would like for Director Real Estate Lance Knuckles to provide some background.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, so commissioners, in front of you, again, you have Resolution, Resolution number twenty-three L R A one fifty-five. Again, my name is Lance Knuckles, Director of Real Estate. And this resolution is authorized into an agreement for engineering services at thirty-one thirty-seven Whittier. Uh, the resolution authorized an agreement with A B N A Engineering, for structural engineering services at thirty-one thirty-seven. Whittier funds are available from the Economic Development Sales Tax Revenue Funds through ordinance fifty, uh, seventy-one five oh five passed through the City of St. Louis, uh, Development Administration. Uh, as we mentioned in previous conversations, commissioners, uh, we have a series of sites in our inventory that have been deemed, uh, historic in nature, not only by designation, but has been identified by community as being priority projects that for S L D C and L R A to address. Uh, this site is one of those sites, and so this is coming back from previous discussions, uh, about these parcels. And so this address, we want to move forward uh, leveraging EcoDevo funds for this project in value of a million dollars to support the engineering services, uh, as well as future stabilization. So this resolution, uh, allows us to move forward into getting the agreement put in place and begin to divide, find contracts, uh, to move forward, and that contract will be brought back to this body for support and approval prior to work being conducted.
Thank you. With that, I move that we accept Resolution number twenty-three L R A dash one fifty-five. Do I have a second?
Second with the clarification.
Yes, ma'am.
Did you say that this was, uh, this resolution was specific to that address?
This resolution is specific to this address, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Bob will go. Can I have a second? Well, she did, she did second. Yeah, she did, she actually did. Bob will go.
Commissioner Arnold.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Val.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, we have Resolution number twenty-three L R A one fifty-six. I ask that, uh, Lance Knuckles, Director of Real Estate, provide additional background.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Again, Lance Knuckles, Director of Real Estate. Uh, this resolution is for authorizing entering into an agreement for structural engineering services at forty sixty-seven St. Louis Avenue. Uh, this resolution authorizes an agreement with Civil Design Incorporated for Structural Engineering Services at forty sixty-seven St. Louis Avenue. Funds are available from the Economic Development Sales Tax Revenue through ordinance seven one five zero five passed through the City of St. Louis Community Development Administration. Again, as a previous resolution in one fifty-five, this is another site, uh, which is Saraloo Cafe, which is a very historic uh, structure to not only the community, but also it has been designated historical site. Uh, and this is our effort to begin the structural assessment. Uh, and again, you would not move into a contract prior to bringing that contract back to the board uh, before you move forward. So I see your report, uh, to move forward with the approach of an engineering agreement uh, for forty sixty-seven St. Louis Avenue.
Thank you. So with that, uh, I move that we accept Resolution number twenty-three L R A dash one fifty-six. Do I have a second?
Second.
Bob will go.
Commissioner Arnold.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Val.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Do you have the, the record report? Um, Commissioner, uh, this morning, I do not have a record report. Uh, we continue to make some assessments to the operational practices, and there will be a series of items that will bring just that as a modification language back to the body next month. Uh, nothing major, we're continuing to move forward. Uh, we're really excited about ramping up the partnership with the St. Louis Regional Prime Commission, where we have identified a hundred and twelve structures that will be accelerated in the demolition process that are unsafe, uh, to support that program moving forward. So we're excited about that progress. But there are no other urgent or burning items that I need to bring before the body this month.
Thank you.
Thank you. This commission meeting is scheduled for September twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three.
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
One second.
Thank you.